Good evening. It's 7:04 and we'll call the meeting to order. All members are present and you'll notice that Town Manager Mike Kira is not here this evening. He has to attend to some personal business, so Assistant Town Manager Jeff Hull is here in his place. We'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 44, 44A, 45, 45A, and 45B. Do we have a motion?
Motion is moved seconded.
May I be seconded? Anything further? All in favor?
All right.
It's unanimous. We have no minutes to approve this evening and before, starting with our regularly scheduled seven o'clock agenda item, we got word late today that Representative Micali has an update from the Legislative Delegation relative to the MWRA pipeline connection and thought it'd be appropriate to have you in. So if it's okay with everybody here in the audience, have a seat.
The Town Manager invited me in tonight to give an update on the MWRA. The bill had a hearing a week ago, about a week ago. Town Manager showed up, Mike Kira, and I, and we testified on the bill. We got an immediate, which I know we were getting, immediate approval from the Committee of Natural Resources. Bill then went at its way through third reading. We got it out of third reading and today we took the final steps of engrossing it in the House, engrossing it in the Senate, enacting it in the House, enacting it in the Senate, and the third reading gave it quite a scrutiny. I'm happy to report that everything was favorable. Went to the Governor's desk, that's where it is right now. Town Manager had called, I suggested to him to call the Governor last week to forewarn him. Because the problem with that situation is every day we have to go to the MWRA without that legislation being signed, we're going to be paying a surcharge of 30%. So far, we haven't had to do that. And we talked with the Governor's people today with a sense of urgency, you know, we want to take a couple of days to look at it. I said, "No, there's really, you don't have a lot of time, you know, for the good of the town." So spoke with them, also contacted gentleman who's the liaison over at the MWRA, who's, used to be the Governor's liaison in the same job that this individual was passing on the legislation for the Governor. So the bottom line is, we've touched all the bases. Everything's moved through very favorably and much quicker, much sooner than everyone thought. Like I said, today, we kept the House session open, waiting for the bill to come back from the Senate, and we had the Senate remain to get the bill enacted there. So it's all positive. You know, the town has completed their end of the situation with the town meeting last week where the people voted to go to the MWRA, and prior to that, the MWRA signed a contract with the town to make them a permanent member. And as I said, this is the final step, the legislators' part, which is mandatory, and everything's all set, waiting on the Governor's desk for his signature. And when I'm in there tomorrow, I'll check on it again. As of this afternoon, they were going to be looking at it and discussing it with us. So if there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I know that Senator Tower also checked in with us, and I know obviously you're working with the Senate.
Yeah.
And then to your point that you had urged the Governor's office to look at it quickly, they did get back to the town very late today, indicating that they would turn it around quickly. So if you can check on that too long as you indicate.
Yeah, they told me that this afternoon, and as I said, I told them there was an urgency there. But I also had the gentleman who was the right-hand man to the Governor, who's now at the MWRA, maybe because of more permanency, asked him to touch base with the Governor, and he did. And so I think we're all set. They're going to sign it and we'll be in business.
Sounds good. Anything else from the board?
I'd just like to say, appreciate your efforts doing that. I mean, obviously, we need portable water. I support the connection to MWRA. I was one of the, one or two slugging it and signing the original contract, but I do need us to go forward. MWRA is the way to go, the only alternative. So appreciate your efforts in trying to get it through.
You have to take a long, hard look at everything before you jump in. And I'll say it again, that after that, our situation is complete, unless there are times when you might want to amend it. And that's another long story, but right now, we're all set.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good meeting with you. Take it easy.
And thank you to folks in the audience for that indulgence. And our scheduled seven o'clock appointment is with Michael Quinn, President of Han and Donuts LLC, doing business at Dunkin' Donuts, regarding a request to obtain a common victual license for property located at 359 Middlesex Avenue. Mr. Quinn?
Hi, Senator.
Good evening. Certainly, have a seat up here.
My name is Adam Quinn. I'm a partner with my dad in the store. Mike Quinn couldn't make it, I'm sorry for that.
Good evening. And just the only have a common victuals license application, and that's typical. It's not any surprise to us. Is there anything other than the typical application for Dunkin' Donuts?
The only thing I was going to ask the board to consider is, we were trying to, both for the town's benefit and our benefit, restrict the hours of operation from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay.
If we don't restrict the hours, the franchisor, Dunkin' Donuts, can ask us to stay open longer. We can have trucks coming in and out in the middle of the night, and considering there's a fair amount of residents there, we thought that 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM would benefit everyone.
Okay. Before going to the board or opening it up to the audience, do we have any recommendations from department heads?
We do. We have a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, Director of Public Health. I recommend the approval of a common victualist license for Han and Donuts LLC, DBA Dunkin' Donuts, subject to the issuance of a food establishment permit from the Board of Health. Also, a recommendation from Al Spalding, Inspector of Buildings. I have reviewed the application for a common victualist license for the above property and have no outstanding zoning issues.
I see that they're attached to our packages here. Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, I'd just like to disclose that I have work for Dunkin' Donuts, but not at the site before I vote.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. I'm like, Mr. Quinn, could you just expand a little bit on the hour, the thing that you mentioned about the hours? I wasn't sure I've completely followed what the franchisor could mandate you do certain things.
Dunkin' Donuts, the franchisor is trying to establish longer hours of operation, obviously, for more sales for everyone. And in general, franchisees don't approve of it, one, there isn't that much money late at night and early morning, and two, there's more traffic and trucks for delivery. Usually, there's a daily delivery of donuts every day, and then there's two or three times a week of trucking in for cups and other supplies. So we like to, the franchisee likes to keep it usually from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM, if it's possible from the board.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience? Do we have a motion from the board?
I made a motion with regard to common victual license, as requested by Dunkin' Donuts, doing business as Michael Quinn, President, Han and Donuts LLC, located at 359 Middlesex Ave, Wilmington, and to restrict hours of open, from, opening hours from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Is that satisfactory?
Perfect. Thank you.
I second that.
Tell the truth, you just don't want to work extra hours, right?
What's that?
You don't want to work extra hours.
That's right.
That's why you are here.
Wait a second, what am I doing here?
Motion's been made, seconded. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Our next regularly scheduled appointment is with Deputy Police Chief Robert Richter and Police Lieutenant Joseph Desmond, regarding an application for a justice assistance grant. Gentlemen?
Good evening, gentlemen.
I'm going to defer this to Lieutenant Desmond. He's our grant administrator.
Okay. Well, not all the news out of Washington financially is bad news. We did, as of the 17th, when President Obama signed the Recovery Act, it funded a lot of new revenue into the cops office, which allows local police departments to apply for grants for a variety of different things. One such grant is what we call a JAG grant, or Justice Assistant Grant. The department was allocated $16,000 from this grant. The nice part about this particular grant is it's fairly flexible. We have the right to determine our own needs and basically spend the money within reason, the way we see fit. To that end, the chief and deputy and the powers that be of the police department have decided that we are due for a change in our current firearms. We currently have a firearm that's been, we got them back in 99, and they're reaching the age where we're starting to spend more money in repair. They're starting to fail at the range. So we think this is a good opportunity to upgrade our weapon system, and this will pay for at least half of that. The other half will come out of the police department's existing budget. So there won't be any extra costs to the town. So we think it's a good way to use some federal funds to pay for an item that normally would, would be incurred by the, by the town. The requirement of the grant is that we come here, at least notify the public of what our intentions are in opening up for any questions. So that's why we're here tonight.
Questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Talking about your weapons, when was the last time you had new weapons for the police department?
We, the current weapons we have now, we were purchased in 1999. So they're 10 years old. And at the time, we were able to trade in our existing weapons. Basically, it was a straight-up trade. It didn't cost anything back then. But this time, we weren't able to do that gun for gun, so we do incur a cost. So 10 years is at that point where they're starting to age. We fire about 450 rounds a year. That's just through training. That's a minimum, and that's every year after 10 years, it starts to wear on a handgun.
Makes sense that you're going to get federal dollars, so it just makes sense logically to go forward with that.
Unfortunately, we hadn't planned on replacing the weapons this soon, but over the last year at the range, we've had several failures, but two catastrophic failures of the weapons where they've broken frames. And to us, that's, that's an officer's safety issue. Thankfully, they, they broke on the range and not when somebody really needed it. So now's the time for us to move forward.
It's no different that police cruisers all period of time. You need to recycle it anyway, you know?
Right.
So it just makes common sense that, you know, especially at the Fed stimulus plan, I assume that's where the monies are coming from.
Yes.
So just take, take advantage of it. That's all. Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The comment to the question, the comment that I've heard finance committee members make that I generally agree with is when grant monies are available, unexpected streams of revenue are available, it makes sense for capital expenditures like this, that aren't going to be recurring in the budget every year. So I think that, that does make sense. The question I have is what, what you need from the board in terms of, obviously, I understand you're looking for the board's support. Do you need to formalize that support by way of a vote in order to submit the grant, or has it been submitted? What's?
No, I believe it's just a motion of support.
Okay.
Is all that's required. For the federal government, our only requirements are that there is a, a public statement made and that there is an opportunity for the public to make comment on it, as well as the local governing bodies. So basically, it doesn't need a, a vote of approval, but I would imagine an entertainment of a motion to support is all it would take. I, I would like to just make a comment that not every police department in the state has received this justice assistant grant money. One of the reasons that the town of Wilmington is receiving their amount is, a lot of it is based on the uniform crime reporting to the FBI. We're, we're receiving this money because of our accurate reporting. And I just want to thank Lieutenant Desmond, especially Sergeant Fiori. Our reporting has been dead on with, with our, our crime statistics. That is one of the major reasons we have received this money. I believe even towns like Tewksbury, Reading, they're not receiving any of this money. We are fortunate enough to do it. The main reason is because of the reporting that's done through the department. That goes right down to the offices, the completeness of the reports, the accuracy. All of that is taken into consideration in this uniform crime report, and that, that is the major reason we are getting a chunk of this money.
It's good to know. Questions or comments?
I just have one question. Is this all firearms, or just do you have small side firearms? Do you have pistols, or is it all?
Right now, we're just looking at, we've constantly been trying to upgrade our patrol rifles, the less lethal weapons, the shotguns. Right now, we're trying to replace all of the handguns, which are the sidearms that the officers carry all the time. And obviously, along with that, the accessories that need to go with it, such as the holsters and everything else. It can get expensive. Again, we did not budget for that. We didn't think it was going to be this soon. But taking into consideration the problems we've had with the weapons that we currently have and the money that was available, we decided now was the time to do it.
If I may, by way of education for me and maybe others listening, is it, over the course of the 10 years or so, or whatever it's been since you got this set of handguns that are now starting to fail and you're having this dangerous situation, is it also, is it also a matter of you've got to keep up with the criminals? In other words, does the weapons get more sophisticated? If you're stuck in weaponry of 10 years ago, do the criminals now have potentially more lethal weapons than you, or is there, is that a factor?
We have been fortunate enough to, we were one of the first departments in the area to go to a semi-automatic handgun, as opposed to the old revolvers. We have been ahead of the curve as far as that's been going. You know, not every officer can carry around a, a machine gun, and that's not a legitimate purpose for it. We have been keeping up with the weaponry. Our offices are armed with patrol rifles and the cruisers. Obviously, you know, if, if we had a tank, I guess would be, but you, you can't always keep up with what everybody is going to have for a firearm. The firearms that we've looked at, our department armor is Lieutenant Sensabaugh and Officer Krizminski have done extensive research on what we have and, and what we're looking at, and the weapons that they've provided feedback on. We feel the best that we can get right now for, for what we need. As far as trying to keep up with the criminals, no. I mean, we look at it from our point of view, what is going to be the safest, most user-friendly weapon that, that our officers can have. And I, I think we've, we've come up with that with, with the research that Lieutenant Sensabaugh and Officer Krizminski have done.
I commend you guys for the reporting that allows us to even be in this situation. I thank you for, for what you're doing.
Anything else up here? Questions or comments from the audience? Do we have a motion with regard to the requested vote of support?
I'll make the motion that we support the police department in regards of the JAG grant.
Well, seconded.
May I be seconded? Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Our next regularly scheduled agenda item is with Shelley Newhouse, Health Director, and Judith Bags, Public Health Nurse, and it's regarding a discussion relative to swine origin influenza A H1N1. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming in to update us. I know it's been a situation that's been changing, I guess, daily, and for the most part, seems to be more comforting news that's in the more general news media, but certainly would like to hear from you two and how it affects the town and what we should expect.
Well, last week, we held a meeting with various department heads, personnel from the police department and fire department, relative to what we were going to do if we had a confirmed swine flu case. Because the guidance from the CDC has changed since this originally had started. They're now recommending that there is no school closures if we have a confirmed case. And I think I, I gave each of you have a copy of, of that, and that hasn't changed since May 5th. We basically just discussed what we would do in the case of, if we had a confirmed case. And we're just going to follow the CDC guidelines. If they change, we'll adapt to those as well. But we're going to do it on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, if we had more than one confirmed case, we would sit down and discuss our options then. But right now, we're not going to close any individual schools or childcare facilities if we have a confirmed case. And as of today, we have no confirmed cases. We have had some tested, but none have come back confirmed. Judy meets or speaks daily with the school nurses, and then we kind of get together every day and do a daily update on the status and what's been going on. I'll let Judy actually explain to you the difference between confirmed and suspect cases. If you want to do that.
Sure. Just as, in a way of an update and a quick review of what's been going on quickly, I'll tell you, we get situation reports every other day. The last situation report we got was today, in fact. And I'll just update you that there have been 101 confirmed cases in Massachusetts so far. In New England, there's 141 cases. Nationally, there's 2,618 cases. And internationally, if you're interested in that, it's 4,694 cases. The interesting thing in Massachusetts, of those 101 cases, it's broken down by areas, and Middlesex County actually does have 60% of the cases. And the rest are scattered over Worcester County, Essex County, what other county? Hampshire County, Bristol County, Plymouth County. So it is interesting that 60% of the cases are in Middlesex County. I don't know what that necessarily means, but we do not have a case in Wilmington. There, there is a case in Bedford, I believe. There was a case in Lowell. So we have some in the surrounding area, but none in Wilmington yet. And Shelley was, not that we anticipated, but none yet. Shelley was referring to what we call probable cases. At one time, the state did it by suspect, probable, confirmed. They have now eliminated suspect. They do only probable and confirmed. A probable case is 95% chance to be a confirmed case. But again, that has not happened in Wilmington. So I think if you look at the history of this, a few weeks ago when it started, almost a month or so ago when it started in Mexico, there was a lot of concern because it was a novel virus. Nobody could really predict what it would do. So all steps were, all emergency protocols were put in place. There was even a thought that it could be, quote, "the next pandemic." Obviously, that did not happen. The virus is not mutating. It has actually weakened. And if you look at the graphs, you see April 26th up here and May 10th down here. So it's, it is, it is burning itself out. I don't know if that's the proper terminology to use, but it's not a concern like it was. Therefore, the original protocols that you saw for school closures have now been modified. And as Shelley said, school closing is not recommended unless there's a cluster. A cluster can be several kids in one classroom. A cluster can be several kids in a sports activity. But right now, there's no cluster. There is absolutely no need to have any school closures. The other question that comes up is disinfection of the schools. You know, we're seeing the news and we're seeing everyone with the mask and spray bottles. Disinfection of schools is not even recommended. It doesn't do anything for this virus. Essentially, it makes people feel better, but it's essentially ineffective against the virus. And certainly, it never helps to clean, but it's not really effective against this virus. So as Shelley said, we meet, I talk with the school nurses daily. What's recommended is very close surveillance, and that's what we're doing at the Board of Health. Shelley and I follow up every day, and we're recommending surveillance. Specifically, that means monitoring of a kid with flu symptoms who would stay out of school, monitoring of an adult with flulike symptoms who would be advised to stay out of work. So with those kind of things, with personal surveillance, and with staying out of school if you're sick, or staying out of work if you're sick, this will supposedly just kind of burn itself out. The concern is that it may come back at a later time with a vengeance, possibly next fall. But no one knows that, and no one can predict that. And DPH, we've been on conference calls. Shelley and I do every conference call. We're really staying on top of it. And as we say, we communicate very well with schools. We're also working with public safety. We're talking about protective personal equipment. We're talking about getting all the appropriate masks, should public safety need them, should any of us need them. So we have a plan in place for that. And we're working very hard on our emergency preparedness plans anyway. And this is kind of a good exercise to make sure that we're, you know, up to date with everything. So it's, it's a good practice session for us.
Questions or comments from the board?
I think this was, thank you, Mr. John. I think this is very helpful. It's reassuring, and it's knowing that you're here, and it kind of puts people at ease to know what's going on in the town. Because I know it's a big concern. Now, as time goes on, we're hearing about it, that it's not as bad as they're saying it was. However, you know, you can't take anything for granted. It's like, you know, diligence. It's really glad to see that we're hearing this, and it's kind of good that it's the case here in this community.
And I, and I will add a couple of quick things that we would like to tell the public that they can certainly call us. We want them to call us. A lot of the information that's in the media is not correct. So we want the public to feel free to call us. We also refer them to CDC websites, Department of Public Health websites. Everybody's online. You can get really good information. There's also a call center by dialing 211. There's a call center set up for MEMA, the Mass Emergency Management Association. And this 211 line, you can ask any flu-related question. And we get reports on that, too, and it's interesting. It shows how the MEMA calls are going down. People aren't calling as much because actually it's sort of fizzling out. So yeah, please feel free to call us. The 211 line is there, and we're happy to answer anyone's questions.
A couple of weeks ago, when we first brought up the idea of, of having some sort of an update on this subject matter, it was when the news was, the word pandemic was everywhere. And I was concerned as a resident of Wilmington, but of the, you know, USA. You know, where does this go? If it continued to go in the pattern that it was going, two weeks hence, today, who knows? You know, the thought was, maybe we are in fact in a full-blown pandemic. What should we be prepared to do? What should we be doing as a community?
Right.
Fortunately, that didn't happen, and we find ourselves now with sharp declines, thank God. But that said, I guess I want to hear, and I started to hear it, that we do have an action plan in place. I suspect we probably always did, but I wanted, I guess, myself to hear, but also the community to hear, that we as a community do have an action plan in place for when and if, hopefully never, a real, in fact, pandemic does occur. These are the steps that would typically be taken.
Right. Well, we do.
We do have an emergency management plan that's in its final draft form. We're working, we got the whole plan back from a company that's reviewing all the plans for the region that we belong to. We belong to Region 4A, which is a bunch of towns that, together, Massachusetts groups them into regions. So we're in a collaborative of regions, and our region hired a company to go through each town's emergency plan. And they make edits and changes and add the proper, you know, names here, what goes here, what goes there, and edits. We got the plan back, and now we're working on all of our edits, all the changes, you know, phone numbers, emergency dispensing site plans, floor plans. So when that's done, which will be very soon, I'll come back to a meeting and present it all to you.
Do you anticipate having that complete before fall, before the next sort of cold season comes along?
Yep.
That's exciting to hear.
And you are familiar with what the emergency dispensing sites are?
I'm not.
The emergency dispensing, shall we?
You go right in.
The emergency dispensing sites are two sites in town that we have chosen, that if we needed to give the community any kind of preventive medication, be it smallpox vaccine, be it antibiotics for anthrax, be it anything, we can activate this site within 24 hours, have it completely manned, and we can vaccinate or populate the entire population within 48 to 72 hours. And we have a medical reserve corps. We're still recruiting for volunteers for that medical reserve corps, medical, non-medical people that will help us staff these sites. And we will literally, according to the plan, be able to accommodate the community in, within 24 hours. And this would go, if it has to go 24 hours a day, it would go 24 hours a day. An example would be anthrax, in which case we'd give Cipro antibiotic. An example would be smallpox. We'd give smallpox vaccination. It could be an antibiotic, it could be a shot. You know, we don't know that. And I will tell you that since Shelley and I have been working together, and we have updated, we are now, receive all our communications electronically, all our communicable diseases electronically. We get the reports immediately. We no longer have to wait for fax or a telephone call. We've updated. We're state-of-the-art. We get calls at home in the middle of the night if we got a flu case. So we would know immediately. We would put our, our operations into play, and we would have the site open within 24 hours.
I don't know if you mentioned that emergency dispensing site is the middle school.
And the high school, if we needed it.
In the high school, if we need it.
Right. So all these plans are in process and just about finalized and completed. And I think we're pretty much state-of-the-art with the electronic surveillance. And so I have that medical piece covered. Shelley has And so I have that medical piece covered. Shelley has the other pieces covered, and we're working on it together.
And I'm sure you'll talk more about that when the plan is completed. But when you come back in, how, the hard copy of that document, how big is it? Is it five pages, 500 pages?
Oh, it's a couple, yeah, it's thick. It's a three-ring binder, a thick one. It's, and it's all different sections. You know, we have an all hazards plan, emergency dispensing site section. There's contact information section, job action sheets, the incident, chemical incident, radiological incident command. It's all different sections.
It's just, I was curious, trying to think about, you know, how we make that information available once it's here. But I don't want to get, I don't want to get too far ahead of us. I was just thinking ahead.
It's a public document.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, and I'm sure we can make it available electronically.
Yep, I will. They will.
And all of that stuff, but I was trying to get a sense of it.
Electronically as well as a hard copy here. The police department will have one. The fire department will have one.
And this might be a good opportunity, too, to just say to anyone who watches these that we do need MRC volunteers. We do need medical reserve corps volunteers. Medical reserve corps, medical and non-medical, anything from clerical to people who agree, people who help fill out forms, people who register to the actual nurses, pharmacists, doctors, who may actually give the medication. So we're actively recruiting from more volunteers.
We had a mock drill when we did our flu clinic this past November at the middle school. We had every, all the players there, and we kind of went through a whole scenario as if this was, if something was going to happen, this is how we would run it. And it worked out well because we had a lot of mistakes, and we're going to do another one this year.
I really focused in when Judy talked about emergency preparedness and the fact that this has kind of been a dry run of sorts. It's good practice. I think that's true of, if you ask most public safety folks, and I'm sure everybody in the health industry, they'd probably tell you that the best practice you can get is a fossil arm of some kind, so.
Right, right. And there is some discussion about possibly having a swine flu vaccine. It's not in production yet, but there's a lot of discussion about that. And some of the CDC things I read today even were that there may even be two different swine vaccines, in which case next flu season would involve the administration of three different shots, two swines and a seasonal. So that'll be a really good chance to practice our EDS. But we'll see. That's not yet determined. It's under discussion right now. There's actually some thoughts that people may have some immunity to this swine flu from, if you were born before 1957, you may have some immunity. And some people took a swine flu vaccination in 1976, and you may even have a little immunity from that. I mean, that's not definitive. It's just something that's being looked at now, so.
And one other question for any, anybody who might be watching or may read about it. If they're interested in volunteering, should they call the director's office or your office, Judy?
Either or. Have applications. We'll be happy to speak with them about it.
It's completely voluntary. So if there was an event that came up and they felt as though they really needed to stay home with their family and they couldn't volunteer, then they can do that. They can pick and choose to volunteer at any event that we needed.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Anything else?
I guess I was a little shocked when you said the information that's coming out from the media is not totally accurate on this wide flow. But on our website, the town website, a lot of this information is obviously on there if people want to get on it. And I appreciate all the hard work yous are doing and see all the pre-planning for something we hope we never, never use.
Well, you know, sometimes it's just allaying people's anxiety. If they see someone in the school cleaning, it makes them feel better. That's fine. But, you know, we don't have to go overboard with the school cleanings either, so.
Don't say that to some folks.
Yeah, but we will anyway.
Right, but we will anyway, sure.
All right. We'll be in touch again. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the reorganization of the board. Anybody have any nominations?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think the two years that I've been on the board, things have been running extremely well. And if you so moved, I would not be remiss if you would do another year on the board as the chairman.
Well, I'm certainly willing to do that. To be honest with you, you guys have kind of made it easy the last couple of years, so I'm.
I'll second the discussion. You know, I agree with Lou. I think you've done a good job being chairman for the past two years. And I'd just like to, you know, also echo that, you know, if it's set in stone, if that's what it is, that's what it is. I just thought, like I said, I think you've done a good job. Personally, I'd be somewhat interested in the chairmanship. I know Ray Lepore served on the board. He did a good job, and I think I could do a good job as chair. And I know no one's really communicated about that. But I just thought I'd just throw that out there, you know, that, you know, I know Mr. Newhouse had it for a couple of years, and I know Mr. Lepore had it. And I mean, I think you could do a good job. I'm saying this. But I have to say, I think it's been a comfort level. I think you're very professional. I think we've done a good job. And I think for the most part, we're getting the people's business done. I think that's reassuring. And I've been on the board a long time, and I've seen differences of opinion, and people kept it to a negative level. And it really hasn't happened with this board. I think we're working together. We can agree to disagree. But I just thought I'd mention that. I respect what Lou had to say, and I just figured I'd throw that out there. You know, I second the discussion, but I'd be interested in the seat of position if there was support out there. But I just thought I'd mention that, too, as well.
Same. I have no problem. I think the last few years, the board's definitely rolled the town forward. I think we've all worked together, and the one issue we're here is for the town. I think definitely, you know, the drawback is I don't think we've heard, you know, that we're not doing a good job. I think the chairmanship is important, and I think Mike's done a good job for the last two years. I have no problem.
I'm the new guy. So my opinion isn't tremendously strong on this issue, or at least in this area. I think you're, as an observer, as a towns person for the last number of years observing and watching in, I've seen you all do a bang-up job. So it's tough for me. I think any one of you would be well-suited to the job. I'm not really sure how to proceed truthfully from this point. I wanted to make sure that all of you know that you have my full support in it. Lou, I appreciate you moving from Mike. I would be, would have been inclined to probably have done the same. And it's not in any way, shape, or form to suggest that I wouldn't have faith in your job, Mike. I just, I guess, in being actively involved over the last several months as I was preparing to come to serve the town, I guess I kind of had in my mind that it would be sort of in this scenario. So that would be probably where I would lend myself.
All right. Well, we have a nomination, or I don't know if you want to make that a motion. I'm, I'm, I hear what's being said, and my inclination is that we've got either nomination or a second. And that, you know, that does a trick, but I don't, I don't want to.
I'm not going to go ahead. There was a motion made. I did second the discussion. You can, you know, call the vote. I just thought I'd like to put my two cents in. I thought you did a good job and said I'd be interested in the position. If the members were interested, I think I could do a good job. I know Mr. Lepore served on the board a couple of years, and I'll get faith in Mike Newhouse if he gets the support, which I tend to think that would be the case. I would support along with that. There was a second made. If you do call a motion, I will, he made the vote. I will second it. And I'm glad I got some discussion. That's all I was looking for.
Let's, let's accept that as a motion then with the second. All in favor? That's unanimous then.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I, again, I didn't want to belabor the vote there, but I too am confident in every member of this board, actually. And we have not agreed every step of the way the last, you know, two, three years. But certainly, it's been a level of debate and discussion that's been productive and appreciated. And again, I think it's, it's been because of the board that things have gone smoothly. So I look forward to that for another year. All right. Without anything further then, we'll move to community. Thank you for the generous word. Thank you.
Under Communications, Mr. Chairman, we have a letter that the town manager sent to Patricia Leavenworth, the director at the Mass Highway, inviting her to, or a representative, to attend the Selectance Meeting on May 26th to discuss the status of the Lowell Street 129 roadway reconstruction project.
Yeah, and probably no need to go through that history. But rest assured, anybody who's listening, the manager went through the history in some detail in that letter. So we hope to hear back from them and have them in at our next meeting, or at least a meeting soon.
Next, under Correspondence, is a letter to the board updating you with respect to the Town Pound. Please be advised that on Wednesday, April 29, 2009, crews from the Department of Public Works moved the stones, which compromised the stone structure known as Wilmington Town Pound from its former location at 9 Glen Road to town property on Middlesex Ave, near the old cemetery and adjacent to the Scale Keepers House within the Wilmington Center Historic District. Representatives from the Historical Commission assisted by marking the stones in order to facilitate in the eventual restoration of the structure. It is the town's intention to restore the Town Pound by recreating the original structure. Accordingly, we are in the process of reviewing the best options to undertake such a restoration project. Recently, the town received an extraordinarily generous donation from a Wilmington resident to assist in paying the costs associated with the reconstruction of the Town Pound. Toward that end, the town will continue to accept donations earmarked for the reconstruction of the Town Pound. Interested citizens may send donations payable to the Town of Wilmington earmarked Town Pound. Next, we have a status from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. We've been receiving these bulletins regularly over the last few weeks in particular. This particular bulletin talks about two public meetings that are coming up. One is scheduled for tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., Room B1 at the State House. And the second meeting is scheduled for Friday, May 15th, 10:00 a.m. at the Hudson Town Hall. In both instances, the intention is to obtain public comment with respect to the proposed budget for fiscal 2010. At this point, the Senate Ways and Means is prepared to release their FY 2010 state budget tomorrow. The House already has a budget released. The situation at this point, as everyone I'm sure knows, is, seems to be deteriorating almost weekly. At this point, based upon the latest revenue projections, there's another billion dollars less in revenue than was projected. And that's, that's assuming that the 6.25% sales tax is ratified. Obviously, this raises serious concerns about local aid. One of the issues being considered is, at least by the governor's office, is reducing the Chapter 70 school aid and essentially replacing that state money with money coming from the federal government as stimulus money. So there's a lot in play. This is changing on almost a daily basis, so. The next piece of correspondence is the, let's see, fiscal 2010 local aid estimates and assessment. That information is provided to the board. Just giving you the current snapshot of where we are. Again, it's, everything's in a state of change here. So I'm sure we'll see new numbers as time goes forward. Correspondence from Meg Tobesco, manager at the MWRE School Programs Project. This is notifying the town of a, an award for the 28th Annual Poster/Writing Contest. An award ceremony to honor the students and their teachers is scheduled for Friday, May 22nd, 2009, in the Reception Training Building at the Deer Island Treatment Facility. And they're inviting members of the community, of the board and the manager to attend. We actually have a student from the Wilmington High School, Lauren Cole, 10th grade student, received a second-place award in the writing contest. The theme, the topic was writing about how a safer alternative to a common household hazardous product can have a positive impact on water quality. The town manager did send out a letter of congratulations to Ms. Cole on behalf of the board. We have an invitation from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to the Metro Futures Meeting. Just briefly, join the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and people from across the region for an evening of discussion, information, and collaboration on how we can turn our vision of a greater Boston into reality. This meeting is set for Tuesday, June 9th, 2009, at 6:00 p.m. for anyone who might be interested. Correspondence from Verizon regarding the Fios program. Fios, as you know, is the cable program they offer. They're announcing a change in one of their channels, CCTV4, will become a part of the Chinese international package. They're providing information that describes the program. The rate for the program is $9.99. This information will be going out to subscribers shortly. We have a letter from Robert Doucette. This is just indicating that he is, his formal notification that he is leaving the position of the, on the Board of Appeals effective immediately. We also have a letter from Tony Barletta. He's expressing interest in serving on the Board of Appeals, and he provides a rather extensive summary of his background, his contributions to the community in various capacities. This is, next correspondence is a letter from the town manager to George Hooper. This letter is relative to Mr. Hooper in his capacity as a member of the Democratic Town Committee regarding the reappointment of Alice Hooper to the Board of Registars. This is essentially protocol in terms of the general laws. Letter from Dan Wondell, chairman of the Democratic Town Committee, indicating that in response to the town manager's letter, he is pleased to advise us that at a meeting held on May 4th, a vote was taken to offer Alice Hooper's name for consideration concerning reappointment. We have a letter from Alice Hooper expressing her interest in the reappointment on the Board of Registars. Next is a letter from Paul Bruce, expressing his interest in reappointment as a constable for the town. A similar letter from John Rowan, expressing his interest in reappointment as a constable for the town. At this point, we have a memo directed to the board and the town manager identifying the list of incumbents who may be considered for reappointment. Appointments or reappointments are scheduled for this evening. And it's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman. I'll just go through the list.
Sure.
At this point, on the Board of Appeals, as was previously noted, Mr. Doucette has resigned his position. This position is a five-year term that expires on 2014. This position is a five-year term that expires on 2014. Next, on the Board of Appeal, Board of Registars, a three-year term to expire 2012. Alice M. Hooper is the person at this point that's being recommended for that post. Council for the Arts, two-year terms to expire 2011. Jane M. Crane, Barbara A. Forstall, H. Elizabeth White. Scholarship Fund Committee, this is an unexpired three-year term, and based upon the recommendation there, we do have a recommendation from the school superintendent that Suzanne Clarkin be considered for this post. Town Council, a one-year term to expire June 30, 2010. Deutch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland. And with respect to constables, Paul D. Bruce Jr., Paul J. Bruno Sr., Alan C. Hunter, Cheryl M. Pryor, Charles E. Rooney Jr., John B. Bridge Jr., Dean DeVito, Ronald M. Degogrio, Michael Garrigan, Wilfred A. Lambert, John Malano, David H. Moskowitz, John J. Rowan, Anthony J. Seiya, Raymond C. Spinazzola, William J. Zampel Jr., Ellen G. Davis-Sawyer, only in conjunction with duties as Animal Control Officer.
If it's the board's pleasure, we can take these up in order. The Board of Appeals, do we want to take any action? Do we want to, what's the board's pleasure?
Whatever the intent, in fact, Mr. Chairman, whatever the intent is of the board, I don't, I mean, I read his resume. It's impressive. Obviously, he understands the construction. He's an architect, so I'm sure he knows setbacks, frontage, side yards, depth, you know, unless, I mean, I don't have a problem going along with the appointment unless you want to put it off to advertise, but it's up to you. I mean, you know, if you feel comfortable with it, I don't have a problem going with it.
I feel the same way you do, so.
Yeah, I'll second Mr. McCoy's motion.
If you're looking for a motion, I'd make a motion.
If you want to go that route, I would definitely, I read the qualifications and his resume that he gave, and I have no problem with it whatsoever.
I make a motion that we appoint Tony Barletta to the Wilmington Board of Appeals for a term of five years to expire in the 2014.
I'll second. Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Board of Registars, Alice M. Hooper for a three-year term to expire in 2012.
I made the motion that we appoint Alice M. Hooper to the Board of Registers for the expiration date until 2012.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Council for the Arts, a two-year term to expire 2011. Jane M. Crane, Barbara A. Forstall, and H. Elizabeth White. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we appoint Jane M. Crane, Barbara Forstall, and Elizabeth White to the two-year term to expire 2011.
Second.
Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Scholarship Fund Committee, unexpired three-year term to expire 2011. We have a vacancy left by John DiMarco, and I understand that Suzanne Clarkin is interested in filling that vacancy. Do we have?
I make that motion that we appoint Suzanne Clarkin for the unexpired term, three-year term for the Scholarship Fund Committee to expire in 2011.
Second. Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? And then Town Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2010. I know the board is aware that, I've had conversations with the managing partner, indicates that Paul Durensis will continue to be available as needed, but that our point person for signing out cases would be John Foskett, who handled the federal lawsuit with the Maple Meadow. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I make a motion, a second. So John Foskett is going to be what, the contact person?
Contact person.
Pretty much, if that's how you would categorize him, the contact, so Paul is going to still be obviously associated.
Right, absolutely.
As the town council, lead town council.
And available if we need.
But he's a contact. Yeah, I have no problem with that. That sounds fine with me, and if that's the understanding, I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we appoint Deutch Williams, Brooks, Durensis, and Holland as our Town Council, starting June 30, 2009, through July 1, 2010.
I'll second. Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor?
I think, I mean, did I make a mistake on the?
Well, it's June 30. It was by one day.
All right, no, 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 I want to see it be corrected. All right, so it's going to be from, it's June 30, July 1 to June 30. Yeah, July 1, '09 to June 30, 2010. Didn't say it. All right, thank you.
That's how we'll accept the motion, made in seconded. All in favor? Unanimous?
May I ask, that has been communicated up through the team at the firm. They're aware of.
Oh, yeah. Constables, if we could take the first list that does not have any restrictions relative to the solicitation of clients, which would include Paul D. Bruce Jr., Paul J. Bruno Sr., Alan C. Hunter, Cheryl M. Pryor, Charles E. Rooney Jr.
So moved.
I'll second.
Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? And then the list of restrictions not to solicit clients but authority to serve civil process for clients who need service into Wilmington, which would include John B. Bridges Jr., Dean DeVito, Ronald M. Degogrio, I'm sorry, Degorgio, Michael Garrigan, Wilfred A. Lambert, John Milano, David H. Moskowitz, John J. Rowan, Anthony J. Seiya, Raymond C. Spinazzola, William J. Zampel Jr.
I'll move that. Second.
Made in seconded. All in favor? Unanimous? And then Ellen G. Davis-Sawyer, only in conjunction with duties as an Animal Control Officer.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Made in seconded. All in favor? Okay, if we could move to our next item, item number seven on the agenda.
The next item is to the Board of Selectmen. These are appointments that the town manager is seeking to make appointments and reappointments subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen. Wilmington Commission on Disabilities, three-year term to expire 2012. George B. O'Connell, Historical Commission, three-year term to expire 2012. William Campbell, Kathleen Black Reynolds. And Permanent Building Committee, three-year term to expire 2012. Joseph A. Langone, Paul J. Armalioli.
Why don't we take these up in order, Wilmington Commission on Disabilities? Do we have a motion as presented by the town manager through the Assistant Town Manager?
I would move that we appoint George B. O'Connell to the three-year term to expire 2012 for the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion to approve or to ratify the appointment. All those in favor? Unanimous? And Historical Commission, three-year term to expire 2012.
I make the motion that we accept the appointment from the town manager, William Campbell and Kathleen Black Reynolds, for a three-year term to expire 2012 in the Historical Commission.
Second.
Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? And the Permanent Building Committee, three-year term to expire 2012.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Joseph A. Langone and Paul J. Millerani as permanent building committee members to expire the term of 2012.
I'll second. Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
In addition, we have town manager appointments and reappointments, 2009. The Animal Control Office, one-year term expires 2010. Ellen G. Sawyer, Animal Inspector, one-year term to expire 2010. Ellen G. Sawyer, Building Inspector, one-year term to expire 2010. John T. Spalding and Peter R. Maggie, Local Inspector. Carter Lecture Fund Committee, three-year term to expire 2012. Ann H. Berghaus, Margaret A. Saint Olm. Cemetery Commission, three-year term to expire 2012. Judith Simmons. Conservation Commission, three-year term to expire 2012. Vincent Lichardi, Mario S. Marches. L.E. Services Commission, three-year term to expire 2012. David Landers and Albert LaValle. Electrical Inspector, one-year term to expire 2010. Frederick Sutter and Arthur T. Kelly, alternate. Gas Inspector, one-year term to expire 2010. Paul J. Rafi, John J. Mitek Jr., alternate. Board of Health, three-year term to expire 2012. Jane Ann Williams Vail, M.D. Housing Partnership, two-year term to expire 2011. Raymond G. Forrest, John P. Gogan, Cynthia McHugh. Library Trustees, three-year term to expire 2012. Karen Campbell, Joan S. Grady. Middlesex Canal Commission, two-year term to expire 2011. Betty M. Bigwood, Michael J. McGinnis, Neil P. Devens, alternate. Planning Board, five-year term to expire 2014. Ann Urick. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire 2010. Paul J. Rafi, John J. Mitek Jr., alternate. Public Wayer, one-year term to expire 2010. Paul Anderson, Kenneth M. Heffron, George LePage, Stefan J. Stella, and David A. Chagru. Recreation Commission, three-year term to expire 2012. Sheila Burke. Trustee of Trust Funds, three-year term to expire 2012. Michael Morris, Pamela L. McKenzie, Lorraine P. Deneen. Veterans Agent, one-year term to expire 2010. Louis Semeglia, fourth. Veterans Grave Officer, one-year term to expire 2012. Louis Semeglia. Water and Sewer Commission, three-year term to expire 2012. Matthew J. Kane. Wiring Inspector, one-year term to expire 2010. Frederick Sutter. Arthur T. Kelly, alternate.
And our next agenda item, item number nine.
This is a letter to the board seeking permission to hold a block party on June 26, from 1 to 6, Clermont Street, Fletcher Street, Morgan Road, and Foley Farm Road, submitted by Tara Hancock Sweeney and Melissa Vitale. Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion from the board?
Is there any input, excuse me, from the Police Department on this?
It is under review by the Police Department. You may want to bring this up at the.
Well, it, I'd say alternatives are two. We can either consider it with any conditions that might be placed on it by the Police Department, or in the alternative, I suppose we could put it over till the next meeting. I don't think it would be the first time, if the board is otherwise inclined to grant it, that we just specifically condition it on Police Department.
I don't have a problem with that, in case folks want to make plans.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, because there's someone's coming, so I make a motion that we grant the request as indicated by the chairman, subject to the Police Department, and DPW.
Second. Made in seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous?
The next item is a letter from Arlene Soroka. She's seeking permission to use the gazebo in the town common for a wedding on August 22, 2009. 12:00 p.m. ceremony.
Jeff, I know you're pinch hitting. Did anybody indicate whether there's any scheduling conflicts?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motions from the board?
I have just a general question. In circumstances like this, do we have a sense of traffic flow? Do we have to get approval or some sort of a recommendation from police officers? I mean, if they have 200 people coming to this wedding, is that a concern we have of use of the space? It's no big deal if it's 20 people. It's more of a big deal if it's 200 people.
Yeah, I think that similar to the block party, the Police Department, it's usually conditional upon the Police Department reviewing it, making sure there aren't any public safety issues, and also scheduling conflicts with anything else that might be going on.
There is no indication in the correspondence as to the number of people, but that would certainly be something we'd look at.
And the other point on that, I think that the selectmen have always had jurisdiction over the common for uses such as that, which doesn't in any way diminish the Police Department's, you know, authority to do what they need to do to make sure the situation is safe.
Well, to me, it feels very much the same as the last issue, where I suspect this is for August 22. And we all know how weddings are. They're planning now for what they're going to do, so if we have the same ability to approve it contingent upon the approval of DPW and the police officers, then I would make that motion.
Second.
We'll accept that as a motion. Seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Public comment. That is it, right, Jeff?
It is, yes.
Public comments?
Yes. Mr. McDonald.
Good evening, Senator Hubbard. I just wanted to comment a few concerns that I have, and the biggest concern I have is our economy, and no one really would have thought a couple of years ago that General Motors would be considering bankruptcy, and I'm a little bit concerned about our NWRA permanent membership status, and I'm not sure if everybody here is aware of how much debt NWRA is actually in. The figure I was told today, about $6 billion. And my concern is that if Olin is helping us out and they go bankrupt, my concern is that the town is going to be left on the hook as a permanent member to help share in their debt, their debt service, and I would hope that the board, if you decide to go ahead with this permanent membership status, that you will put some type of escape clause in there in case Olin goes bankrupt, and I was wondering if you might be willing to share with us if there's any type of agreement that Olin has that states that they will pay the yearly membership cost. I know that the agreement says that they're not going to pay for any water costs, but the yearly membership cost, I was wondering if you could comment on that.
Well, the, what you've asked certainly requires a both-form response, but first of all, I'll say that I'll certainly give you the courtesy of responding to your question, and if anybody else wants to weigh in, certainly give them that opportunity, but do, please do understand that public comment is supposed to be, what is implemented, actually, Mr. McCoy, this chairman, implemented that several years ago, primarily intended to help people find out which avenue to direct their questions, so just for future reference. In response to your question, first of all, there's actually a state statute that exempts any membership, member communities in the NWRA from having to burden, shoulder the burden of NWRA debt, so be comfortable that that's, you know, that's a matter of law that's well established. In terms of the financial obligations of Olin, I want to be careful in that the town specifically has consulted with council. We reserve the right to become whole, to be made whole with Olin. In order to fully understand what that's going to take, EPA is in the process of overseeing the remediation, and a lot of the information that's helpful to the town will be developed through that process, and I don't want to be any more specific about it than that. I will tell you that, you know, in terms of the, what makes financial sense, I certainly was clear, having been at town meetings. I certainly was clear, having been at a town meeting and heard your comments, that you didn't favor it. But there are a number of financial considerations that have been made. The board is aware of them, and the board had supported that measure, and now Town Meeting has. So I don't want to put it off on Town Meeting, but frankly, that's, as soon as the governor signs that bill, this really is an academic discussion, so, because it's happening as soon as the governor signs off. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, refuse to engage in any discussion with you, but I also want to be careful when you're talking about legal issues between the town and Olin. I can only tell you that council is privy to what we're doing, was privy to the measure that was before Town Meeting, and has consistently indicated that we haven't waived our right to continue to recover additional damages from Olin.
Now, thank you for that response. We all know that the General Court, our legislature does have quite a bit of power, and they could actually, in fact, change the laws, correct?
Well, within the constraints of the Constitution, sure.
So, let me give you a hypothetical. NWRA is in debt to the tune of about $6 billion with a B. As I was reading some literature from NWRA, the state cut some of their support by like $15 billion during the mid-year fiscal budget cuts. And should the General Court, the state legislature, choose to change a law that says now the communities have to share in their debt service? I'm disturbed that that could be a possibility, and the town could face serious financial harm. And I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board to keep that in mind when you enter into any agreement that the legislature could, in fact, change a law and cause us to be part of sharing that debt.
I honestly wouldn't accept that as being the case here, but that's, maybe we just have a difference of opinion.
And the other comments I wanted to make were that there are people that work on Saturdays. We just, I believe, spent about $25,000. We had about $25,000 budgeted for hazardous waste household pickup, household hazardous waste drop-off. And it's disturbing to me to know that somebody in town is paying taxes to help support that $25,000 budgeted item, but yet the hazardous drop-off is only open till 2:00. And somebody that has to work and doesn't get home till like 3:00, 3:30, 4:00, they can't really take advantage of that. So I hope that this board in the future would consider taking a look at that and making some changes, because to pay $25,000 and just have the thing open for that short a time doesn't seem like that great of a value.
Yeah, and frankly, that's the kind of thing that we would expect to get from public comment. And I can't respond to you immediately, but certainly I'll check with the town manager and take, revisit that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under important dates, just to highlight the dates coming up.
Actually, let me, if we could, go to new business and committee reports from the board first, and then we'll go through dates. Anything from up here?
I'll second.
I just have a letter from a resident in town here. It says, "Well, the Lowell Street Bridge seems to be coming into focus for a finish. I was just thinking and feel it would be entirely appropriate for a bronze plaque to be placed upon the concrete bridge support in the name of Veterans Memorial Bridge to honor all who served from 1776 to the future. It just seems appropriate and might wish to want to take this suggestion." My question would be if we could have the town manager, I know if we rename a bridge or a park or a square in Wilmington, it has to go in front of Town Meeting. But I'm not sure if that's Wilmington's bridge or if that's a state bridge, because it's a straight road. If we have the town manager look into that and maybe find out which way we could go, whether it's through legislation, if it is a state, state bridge.
Okay.
Big bridge.
Anything else from up here?
I have nothing.
Important dates. Important dates, we have the week of May 11, curbside collection of yard waste, the 11th through the 15th. May 12 is a tiny tots kids' club registration, Town Hall from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. May 13, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. May 16, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. May 16, the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, opening ceremonies at 4:00 p.m. at the Frank Kelly Track. If there are any members of the board that are interested in attending, if you could let the manager know, that would be helpful. May 21, the Sarah Carter Lecture Fund Committee is presenting in now, Mark Twain, the Wilmington Middle School, 7:30 p.m. May 25, the Memorial Day Parade, Parade Formation at 9:30 a.m. at the Wilmington Plaza. The next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is scheduled for May 26.
Very good. And I know that we have an executive session on the agenda for the purpose of discussing proposed MTBE settlement. If it's the board's pleasure, we'll adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session.
Can I just take one comment on Memorial Day Parade? The youth groups usually form at the Wilmington House of Pizza at 9:30, and we do step off from them, and we're still in the works with the Wilmington. As far as right now, all the adult groups will be still meeting at the Wilmington Plaza.
Thank you. Sure.
Relative to the MTBE settlement, I was under the impression at Town Meeting that that was already settled, and we're receiving $858,000.
Good question. There are a number of defendants in a class-action suit, of which Wilmington is a member. And your impression from Town Meeting is accurate insofar as the town has settled with a number of defendants. But every time there's a proposed settlement on the table, it comes to the board, we discuss it in executive session. If, when and if the board approves a settlement and the other side signs off, then it becomes made public at a subsequent selectmen's meeting, so.
So there's additional money, in addition to the $858,000?
There is, there is a proposed settlement now for another defendant, yes.
Do you know how many more defendants are in that class-action lawsuit that haven't been settled with?
I'd rather not say, but when, after this executive session, at a meeting in the very near future, the board would be able to make a disclosure to that effect. Get a roll call vote. Yes, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from the executive session, but I'll come back to open it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor? We'll take a roll call vote beginning today.